And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the May 20th County Commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cell phones. There are meeting documents on the end of the counter in the black folder. And if you need a listening device, Ken is in the front row and he can help you with a listening device. That being said, let's go for it.
Routine business, the first item would be to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Remove.
And a motion, a second, are there any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Second item under routine business is a motion to approve the county commission minutes at 5:13, 2014.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, are there any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Third item is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,213,840.50.
Pay the bills with a comment.
I have a motion, pay the bills with a second or the comment from Commissioner Barth.
Our bills are a bit larger than last week's, but I just would say in IT, we spent $200,000 on software, $100,000 on computers. Our new service for the jail got $250,000. In the human services, you know, the maximum we will pay for a person's electric bill is $420. Today, there are 11 bills of $420. And finally, we have 152 individual bills for mental illness.
I have a motion and a second to pay the bills, are there any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
The reports, item number four, the registered diesel official statement of fees collected during April 2014 in the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of April 2014. Need any action in that? Personnel actions, we carry Dever. We have to consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Is there a motion to-
Remove for approval, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve routine action, are there any additional comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Application for abatements, there are none. Notice and a request, item number seven, is motion to the Boys and Girls Clubs to sue Empire and the Brennan Rock and Roll Academy to conduct a fundraising raffle to benefit the mission of the Brennan Rock and Roll Academy.
For a move for approval?
This is just a notice, we don't need a curve home.
That's right.
Planning and zoning notices, we have none. But item number nine, we have petition for compromise of lien, and Mr. Pecus is scheduled to do that, however, he's not here, but it involves DPNO number 58675 for the amount of $1,701.10 and DPNO 56895 for the amount of $4,010.93.
Ken, are you speaking to the DPNO?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an application that you actually considered last year in February. The applicant was attempting to refinance a home, and there were a number of liens that were not only in his name and his ex-wife's name as a single account, but there was another lien in her name only that had occurred after the divorce. And so that the action that was being sought after last year was to release the lien against the real estate upon payment of $638 for him, which was on DPNO 58675. That was a lien that was held jointly in he and his ex-wife's name. And then the lien would be released against the property with no payment on the ones that were just in his ex-wife's name. At that time, that was 56895. Subsequently to that action, there was another lien that was filed in his ex-wife's name only, and that was 62884. So, the applicant's attempt to refinance last year was unsuccessful, so he did not complete the action on the compromise that was authorized back in February with the payment of $638. And he never did proceed with the payment. So now, he's once again trying to refinance the home. These exact same liens have popped up the second time around, and he's asking for the same action that you approved back in February, is to release these liens against the real estate upon payment of him of $638.
Are there any questions for Ken? Commissioner Barth.
Ken, so the one lien should just be against his ex-wife, is that correct?
There are two liens that should be just against his ex-wife, but we want them referenced, they would need to be referenced in the action that those liens are released against this real estate transaction against that property. And that would be DPNO 56895 and DPNO, excuse me, 62884. In addition, then, the lien that's held jointly, which is 58675, that would be released against the real estate as well upon payment from him of $638 for that one.
Any other questions for Ken?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly.
Do we have any knowledge that the ex-wife has any equity in the house?
As it appears, there may have been some interest at the time when it was initially purchased, but during the divorce proceedings and everything, she's lost whatever equity she turned over, quitclaim deed. And so, that's one of the reasons there's a cloud on these titles.
Yeah, one other question. It appears that there has been no payments since last year when he was aware now, I mean, of the lien.
Correct.
There's been no attempt, there's been no attempt to do anything about it now.
Again, he came to you in February of last year, and you authorized this compromise upon the payment of $638. His refinancing fell through, and he never did come and make the $638 payment as a result. And so, he's back a second time asking that you once again authorize that.
Commissioner Kelly, we aren't giving him any discounted rate. There won't be any discount on this. If we have him pay $638, he will be paying half of his share. He'll be paying his share.
Yeah, but he's responsible for the whole thing, as is she.
As is she is on that one, yes.
Both of them are responsible for all of it.
On that one?
On the one.
On the one.
Yeah, and then I understand the other two are not his at all and probably should not be associated with the property.
Is the applicant here?
He is not.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I sort of see this as being two separate problems, and I guess firstly, you know, to separate the two that should belong just to the ex-wife, I'll make a motion to take this potential real estate transaction off of anything to do with the DPNOs 56895 and 62884, leaving them towards the now ex-wife.
The action would be simply to remove these two liens against the property, that's what we're asking for.
Okay, that's my move.
Two second.
I have a motion and a second to remove the liens against the property.
On two of the liens?
On two of the liens, 56895 and 62884.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Secondly, I guess I will make a motion to deny the other application. The parties had a year or two to show any kind of good faith, hasn't paid a nickel. We gave him a shot last year, he didn't do a thing about it. Even a $10 payment would have been nice to see, it didn't happen. I don't see his income tax on this.
Is that a motion or a comment?
It's both, sorry. I should, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, but that's also-
Got a second.
I have a motion and a second to deny the compromise, any other comments?
No, you can make a comment.
I'll stand on my record.
I'm not going to support your motion, just because I feel like that we're still getting 50 percent, the remaining 50 percent will remain on the wife, and so I'm going to not support your motion. Any other comments? Or roll call vote?
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennega?
No.
Commissioner Barth?
Yes.
Commissioner Haver?
No. Motion is split two to two, that means it will come back next week when Commissioner Pecus is here.
If he is here.
If he is here. When it comes, it'll come back when there's five of us, so.
All right.
All right. This is the time for opportunity for public comment. Anyone who would like to speak on anything that's not on the current agenda may come forward now and identify yourself. As long as it's not on the current agenda.
I think mine might be on the current agenda, I just don't see it up here. Conditional use permit.
Yep, they were coming to that. Yep, you'll have an opportunity later. Yep. Yep, next page.
There's copies of the agenda hanging in the, right outside the door.
Yep. All right, we'll go on to regular business.
Can I have a question? On the last item we acted on, two to two is basically a failure of the motion to carry.
Yep.
Is a standard policy, I mean, it's not Robert's rules to bring it back the next week.
We have to bring, because any action of the county commission has to have three votes. And so, since it did not, and we bring it back, that's an automatic bring back, so that the full commission has an opportunity to weigh in on the issue.
So, okay, all right. This is an automatic reconsideration, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Move on to regular business.
Do you have any comments on that?
Well, in any event, we could put it back on the agenda next week anyway, so, unless somebody has another motion that they wanted to bring about the item to resolve it otherwise, you could have done that.
Okay.
Regular business. Item number 10 is a briefing regarding pending changes to the animal control contract with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society involving the handling of livestock. Corey Beatty.
Good morning, Corey. Could you just identify yourself, please?
Good morning, Commissioners, Corey Beatty, Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. I think we have sent through the notice of change. As all of you know, we do livestock as a courtesy and have for many, many years.
Hold the microphone down a little, thank you.
Okay, better?
Yeah.
We have done livestock as a courtesy for many, many years. The Animal Industry Board of South Dakota has now told us that they would rather not see us do that. We have been helping out law enforcement, you know, when pigs fall off a truck or when cows, you know, go out of a fence or whatever that might be. But right now, after a couple of years ago, they had a raid on a property. And so, since then, we've had a lot of problems going out onto farms. We're not involved with any other organizations like the Humane Society of the United States or any of those, we're a local group. So, we have had a lot of issues going onto property, we don't want to trespass. The Animal Industry Board does want to take care of those livestock calls, the cruelty and neglect, and then as always, as we are in our profession, we are domestic pet related. So, those are the changes that we're putting forth as of now. We also are getting raccoons, badgers, and other wildlife brought to our doors now, and baby raccoons, small badgers, possum, some of those types of things like that, that are brought into the Humane Society, which obviously is a rabies problem for one, it's a public safety issue. So, we are also asking to change the contract to read that the Wildlife Organization, the Game Fish and Parks, take care of those calls. So, that's the basic realm of the changes.
This is just a briefing. Ken, do you have a comment?
As I understand, these changes will be effective June 1st?
June 15th.
June 15th.
Yes. And we will always do emergency calls, no matter what, we've always done that, and we will certainly continue to do that, so it won't be a loss of any quality of service that way. But the livestock piece will not be in there, nor will the wildlife.
Commissioner Kelly?
Are these changes coming about because the animal board requested you to do this?
When we have gone out previously, and we've had cattle and pigs and everything else up at the Humane Society for storage, when we wait for an owner to come pick them up, they are really not interested in having us do that. They'd rather send out their veterinarians and also their staff to talk to these people and find out why, number one, their animals are getting out, and, you know, if they cause any sort of problems in the community, they also want to make sure that they're dealing directly with the livestock owners.
So, what time of, what kind of response? I mean, here's a cow on the road, black cow at night.
Right.
Your response time, I assume, was fairly, fairly quick. How long's it take these guys to get out?
For the most part, law enforcement has been able to do a lot of those things, and they'll only call us in an emergency. So, we really haven't done that many, honestly. You know, as far as getting out there and having to go in the middle of the night. We did, a couple of years ago, had to do some horses out by McCrossan Boys Ranch, that was about three in the morning call or something, someone, they got out, and, but, you know, for the most part, the law enforcement folks already know who those are, you know, belong to, the horses or cattle or whatever it might be, and so they'll just contact the property owners in the rural community.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, I appreciate your work in this area anyway, because animals obviously are all over the place. And this is a little bit off, but what about raptor rescue? Where does it, where should a person take an injured owl or eagle or whatever?
Well, that, and then, that is another thing that's come up just in the last couple of years. We do now have a local person for game fish and parks. So, they actually have to have a raptor license, we don't have it at the Humane Society, just because we don't have that capability of being able to take care of those types of animals. So, we do call the game fish and parks. If somebody brings them in injured, we do keep them until they come and pick them up.
Okay, but the appropriate thing to do would be to call-
Call game fish and parks. Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, this was just a briefing, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Item number 11, to consider a resolution to participate in the bridge inspection program using South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Replacement Funds to hire Banner Associates Incorporated. DJ Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. March 11th, you approved a motion to hire Clark Engineering for the bridge inspections for Minnehaha County. And after March 11th, when we were in negotiations for the contract, the person that was going to be performing our bridge inspections became no longer employed with Clark Engineering. And so, since we had no contract, we decided to switch firms, and we are now requesting a motion to work with the state to hire Banner Associates Sioux Falls to complete the bridge inspections.
Questions for DJ?
DJ, have you inquired of Clark Engineering about this? Are they aware of this?
Yep, we've had a couple discussions back and forth.
And what was their sense of this?
Their sense was basically that they could still perform the work, and that they would be able to complete it even though they lost that staff person, and we understand that. We were just wanting to work with that particular staff person that they lost.
Are you, if I may, one more question. Do you know if they made any preparations with their organization to honor this contract at this point or not?
They, I'm not sure, they were not under contract, and so my guess would be no. As far, as far as hiring interns to help out with the contract or signing subcontracts or anything like that, I'm not aware of any of those.
Okay, thank you.
And the other, Commissioner Barth?
So, this was not a RFP, this was just professional services?
That's correct, yep. The state of South Dakota is actually the contracting authority, and they send us an informational letter every single year that has a list of consultants to choose from, and then we pass a resolution indicating which consultant that we wish to work with, and then the state DOT, they negotiate with a consultant and execute a contract with them. Thank you.
Any questions? Looking for a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to participate in the bridge inspection program. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 12 is to consider a motion to approve the purchase of one Caterpillar 242D Skidsteer with options from Ziegler Incorporated for the Highway Department from a contract competitively bid by the state of Minnesota, DJ.
Commissioners, again, with this item, we have significant cost savings with the capital improvement fund that we have established in our long-range plan. We have two items that we have budgeted for this year. We have a sweeper and a skid steer totaling $115,000 for the two budgeted items. With this purchase, we will be hopefully purchasing a skid steer, and the price of that is about $50,000 or $46,000, I think, and then, and then we added an attachment, that is a sweeper, a pickup sweeper attachment that would replace the need for having a motorized sweeper, which was budgeted for, and so we can kill two birds with one stone, and for the total purchase value of $62,124, get the sweeper and the skid steer, and if you have any questions about that, that combination, I can answer them at this time.
Commissioner Barth?
DJ, this is off of a bid from the state of Minnesota, and it's from a company in Bloomington, Minnesota. Do we know that a local company would not have matched that bid if we put out a RFP?
Yeah, and the way that this is planning on work, we're actually working with Butler from Sioux Falls, and Caterpillar, they have territories assigned to their dealers, and because this is a Minnesota state bid, all of the pricing nationwide is basically the same. And so, we're purchasing off of a Minnesota state bid, and since that contract was through Ziegler, that's who our bill will come, our invoice will come from, but because they have territorial jurisdiction, we will, we'll still be working with Butler in Sioux Falls. Butler will service it, Butler is administering the sale, but the invoice will come from Ziegler.
So, at the same time though, DJ, if we'd had a RFP locally, it's possible a different company than the Caterpillar dealer might have bid on this as well, right? I mean-
Absolutely, we could have gotten anything, and we do look through our purchasing policy, we look at other contracts all the time to see if we are able to purchase off a different competitively bid product, as long as that is a good price. And Butler through Sioux Falls did provide another bid from the city of Mowbridge, and this was actually cheaper and a better product, a different attachment that was available, and that's why we were able to do this without going through a separate bidding process for the sweeper. And so, we have investigated multiple purchasing options.
Madam Chair, move approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve the skid loader for the Highway Department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. DJ, we talked briefly on the phone, or not on the phone, through email about possibility, and if we should just check with facilities and see if that surplus would be anything they'd be interested in, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, once we receive the new machine, then we'll go through that process formally through the commission and make sure that everything gets transferred or surplus the way that, the way that we agree on.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is to consider a motion to approve the annual purchase of various aluminum traffic signs from Newman Signs, DJ.
On March 18th, we had you consider the award of our annual materials letting contracts, and item number, or proposal number six of the annual materials letting was for aluminum traffic signs. That bid was rejected due to bid irregularities, and so, because that bid is less than $25,000, we don't need to do a formal advertisement alone separately for that proposal. We've since negotiated with the three vendors that are interested in providing that service for us, and solicited quotes, formal quotes for the sign contract. And Newman Signs out of Jamestown, North Dakota has been identified as the vendor that we would like to work with, providing the least cost for the overall contract. And so, if you have any questions about the quotes or about Newman Signs, I can answer them now. Otherwise, we'd request your approval to move forward with the contract with Newman Signs.
Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Barth?
So, will the townships be able to buy under this contract too then?
They, they can, that's not the way that our contract is structured, but similar to how we are requesting the purchase off the Minnesota state bid, they can, they can do that same type of purchasing.
Thanks. Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of aluminum signs. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 14 is a briefing from the Minnehaha County Highway Department regarding traffic counts on 479th Avenue before and after Highway 121 closure. We have Jason Reeves.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Reeves, Project Engineer, Highway Department. About a month ago, April 15th, at a meeting here, we discussed the township, Edison Township, reducing the speed limit on this section of roadway to 45 miles an hour. And in our discussion, you'd requested us bringing further information to you on traffic counts for this roadway. Prior to the construction, this roadway received approximately 20 vehicles per day, and then after we closed Highway 121 to start the bridge work at Highway 122, it does appear that a significant portion of Eros's people are using this roadway as a, as a week span from May 5th to May 9th. We had an average of 196 cars per day on this two section, two mile section of roadway. We did, we did leave it on there one day longer just to see what happens during a rain event, and it was pretty, it rained most of Sunday and some of Monday, and it did drop to 113 vehicles that day. So, they, it seems as though they're staying away from it a little bit when it rains, but we're still at a pretty healthy amount at 113 a day there. Edison Township has put on some, some crushed rock on this road. The first rain events that we had on it were, were very slick. I drove it myself, and it was not a real comfortable drive in a Tahoe, so, but they did put some, some washed rock on it. It appears as though it stabilized the roadway really well. It has rained since then, and I've driven down it, and it's definitely better than it was. So, that's, that's an improvement to the road. They haven't put up their speed limit signs, which we discussed a month ago, and I'm kind of unsure why, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It is, it is their responsibility, as the township road is their jurisdiction. They asked for approval of it, but they haven't put them up. We have, we've told them to, you know, call and locate's and where to locate them at, but they haven't put them up. But my experience, I go out there a couple times a week, and I don't think traffic's driving 55 on it. I would say 40 to 45 is probably the average speed on the road, so, I don't see any imminent problems out there. And if you have any other questions, feel free.
Commissioner Kelly?
How far are Route 115 from, from that intersection?
115 is back toward the west, I believe, three miles.
Three miles?
Yes, I believe it's three.
So, it's natural for them to want to take the shorter route?
Absolutely, yeah. If they went back to 115, I would guess where it would be in the neighborhood of a 10-mile detour to go around.
What's the, is there a detour set up?
Our signed detour, it goes over to 115, yes, because we only sign our detours to paved roads. And this section of 479th is two miles of gravel road.
Commissioner Bennega?
Jason, when we discussed this earlier, I think the sheriff's department had some concerns about even the speed limit being 45.
Yep.
Have you had any contact with them or the township on why those signs haven't been put up?
Not recently. The township, I just had a little misunderstanding originally that we were going to supply them the signs, which is incorrect. Once again, it's, it's their jurisdiction of the roadway, so we directed them on where they could purchase signs at, but that it was their responsibility. And I was under the assumption they were going to put them up, but as of last Thursday, they hadn't put them up yet. Certainly can touch base with them again. We've not talked to the sheriff's department, we haven't received any complaints from Eros or anything of the sort out there of excessive speed or anything of the such. I haven't really, I haven't really received any comment, I guess, from Eros on, on the roadway, that they're displeased with what's going on with it, so.
Commissioner Barth?
Jason, it's not exactly to do with this, but I heard from a citizen that a couple of the bridges that have been replaced up there had kind of clunky carryovers from where approaching the bridge and hitting the bridge, and like a six-inch gap or something like this. Is that taken care of now?
It's not taken care of yet, I know, these would be the two structures to the north of the two that we're doing right now. After the frost came out, that, the bumps there definitely came to fruition some more. Our highway department is, is aware of it, and our, we've talked to, we've talked to our crews about it, they're, they're in the process of hurry up and get some things done, one with a wallache parking lot, and then two with some patches we need to do prior to, prior to the chip seal, which is going to happen sooner than later, I found out last week. So, after those- So after those get done, we plan on getting over there to get those done because I know we've received more than a couple complaints about it because the, the one direction, I believe it's southbound on the first, on the furthest north bridge is, is a pretty healthy bump. And we have put up bump signs for that and are aware of the problem and we're, we're in very, since the asphalt plants have opened, we're in very busy mode right now trying to get things done and that is on the, on the schedule.
Any other questions, Jason? This is just a briefing?
Correct.
Okay. Guess I'll move on. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is to consider motion to authorize the purchase of weed control chemicals in the amount of fifteen thousand, fifty dollars and forty cents for the Minnehaha County Weed Control Department from contract number one-six-five-seven-nine and contract number one-six-five-seven-six. They're competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. We have Ralph Hammer to speak to this.
Ralph Hammer, county weed pest supervisor. This is the normal weed chemical we use for weed control in the right of way. We've used it for years now. Included in that is a fifty-fifty grant from the state that actually assigned for sixty-three hundred dollars to help pay for it, so.
Any questions for Ralph regarding weed control? Commissioner Barth.
Ralph, I know we ask you this in the past, but is there any concern about residual effects of the chemicals that we use, people's gardens, cattle grazing in the ditch or taking hay from the ditch?
Almost every chemical used will have some residual effect if you're going to control the weeds that we need to control. I'm using the chemicals that have the least amount of residual effect that I get.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Are we looking for approval?
Move for approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the weed control chemicals. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen is to consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number fourteen dash eighteen to allow construction of a forty-two-foot by sixty-six-foot detached accessory structure on property legally described as Track forty-three and Track forty-three A, West Acres, Section seventeen, T-one-oh-one, M, R-fifty-W, in the Scott Anderson addresses.
Scott Anderson, County Planning Department. As the auditor indicated, this is an appeal of a conditional use permit, fourteen dash eighteen, which was approved at the April twenty-eighth Planning Commission with eight conditions. Dennis and Loretta Bandenbrink and Alvin and Elizabeth Folk have appealed the County Planning Commission's decision to approve the construction of a forty-two-by-sixty-six-foot detached garage. The location of that property is at four-six-seven-one-zero Chestnut Street, which is in, which is in West Acres. West Acres, as you know, is about three miles west of Sioux Falls on Highway forty-two. The applicant wanted to construct this larger building which equates to two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet. Our zoning ordinance requires that anything, any structures located in a subdivision of more than four lots is limited to twelve-hundred square feet unless they get a conditional use permit. The applicant sought the conditional use permit. We had a hearing at the Planning Commission. No one spoke in opposition of the, of the conditional use permit. And as you read in their protest letters, they didn't understand that they could get up and appeal this. So they provided a written appeal and the appeal is today. I have some pictures that I'd be glad to show you. This is the general overview of the property. Highway forty-two would be this down here at the bottom. This is basically Highway forty-two. This is the subject property. You can see, this is a map that we provided to, to the, to the Planning Commission that shows that there were other large, large buildings out there. This, this property to the north had a total of about four thousand square feet of detached accessory buildings. This property on, on Buckeye and four-sixty-seventh had a total of three-hundred and thirty-three-hundred-and-sixty square feet. And furthermore, it is of note that these people here obtained a conditional use permit for a larger building at equaling, or for the thirty-six-hundred square feet last year. So it was a very recent conditional use permit and constructed the building. So this is the applicant's lot. You can see the conditional use permit sign, if you look closely, right here, stuck on this tree. This is an empty lot. The applicant's house is off to the right. This is the larger building that was constructed last year, which, which a conditional use permit was obtained. This is another large building that's in the property. This is the, the base, basically the applicant's, the construction site or the location where the garage will, will sit. And those are some other large buildings that are in, in the vicinity. So I provided you the, the appeal letter and the minutes from the Planning Commission. I'd be glad to answer any questions. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this conditional use permit with eight conditions.
Any questions for Scott? Commissioner Barth.
Scott, there, on the applicant's property, it shows in effect two lots. What's the, there's...
If you look, I, I'm, I'm unsure why, but when this subdivision was created, there was sort of a row of lots, if you see along here...
Yes, I see.
There was a whole row of lots that have an additional lot platted to the, on one side of them. I'm not sure if that was intended to be like a larger boulevard or something and they did away with it, but it's, for this subdivision in that location, it's not unusual to see that.
Any other questions for Scott? This is a public hearing, so this would be the time for the proponent to talk, the person who was in favor, if you'd like to speak in favor of your building. This is an opportunity for you to address us, if you'd give us your name and your address.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Meyer. I live at four-six-seven-one-zero Chestnut Street. And I'm trying to build this, get this building approved, mostly because I have a camper boat, an extra vehicle, several trailers, and I'd just like to have this stuff inside rather than cluttering up the lot and looking like a mess. So there's also another small storage shed that I plan to take down. It's, the house is old and the storage shed is old and I'm just trying to clean things up and make things look better.
Any questions for Mr. Myers? Okay. We'll give you an opportunity to come back if you would like. Anybody from the opponents, the people against it that would like to speak? If you'd just identify yourself and your address, please.
Sure. My name is Loretta Bandenbrink and I live at two-six-four-six-six Holland Avenue in West I do have some handouts that I'd like to give to you. Just to answer Commissioner Barth's question about the additional tracks on some of those, it's my understanding with those that, that street called Bluegrass was originally further to the south. And I think that originally when the developer, or when the person started building the homes in that track, they went back to the developer and said that the road was in the wrong place and he had to move it further to the north. And I think that's how come there's those additional tracks are there. So I'm here this morning to say that I've been a resident of West Acres for thirty-six years and I oppose this permit because I believe that it's in violation of the covenants. Since the hearing, I've, I've done some work here to try to make this presentation a little bit easier. And you'll find in the handouts, there is, I kind of pieced together a little map that's color-coded that shows the individual plats that were there. The section in blue was put together in seventy-three, in red it was in seventy-six, and so forth. Green was seventy-six and yellow was seventy-seven and purple was seventy-eight. But it was, these plats were made kind of independently and then a covenant's assigned to each plat. And because they, they were done that way, if you look at the covenants, sometimes they're kind of hard to follow. And, and some of the copies there, I did give copies of the actual plat and the covenants. But I went through the covenants and I went through each restriction and that's what this page is. And for instance, it just shows that the restriction number one, the wording in that is, is the same for all four plats, the color-coded plats. Where in restriction number two, you'll see in the, the blue and the red, they had, the discrepancies I, I put in red so you can see, for example, in blue and red, restriction number two said it, and further showed that certain areas it should not be any closer to seventy feet from Highway sixteen, which that, that portion wasn't needed in some of the other plats because they're already set back that far to the north. In, in the restriction number three, the blue plat talked about where you could have more than one dwelling on the track, tracks twenty-eight through thirty-five. Restriction number three in the red was for tracks thirty-six through forty-three. But when they put that, they still listed the same track numbers from, from the blue section, so there was just a few things there that didn't match up sometimes. I think it's important to note that restriction number three is not included on the green and the yellow sections of the covenant. And I want to just point out on here that if you look at these, you can see in the blue sections that the majority of the tracks, it would be to the west, are all one-acre tracks, where some of them within the horseshoe are possibly less than an acre. Same thing in the green. There's portions of the green that are smaller, they're probably not one acre, a full one In West Acres Development, the one-acre tracks, everyone out there is on real water and everyone has a septic tank. And according to the, the county guidelines, there's a one-half acre minimum requirement for a septic tank. The covenants do allow that a track can be divided into two parcels. And so the, the red lines through certain tracks indicate that that track has been divided So with that, I'd like to point out that the reason I think that the conditional use permit, fourteen eighteen, for that accessory building is violation of the first and the third restrictions of the covenant. Because the first restriction states that no covenant, or excuse me, no track shall be used except for residential purposes only. And the third restriction says that there shall not be permitted more than one dwelling on each track, except when permitted by applicable zoning regulations, then two dwellings should be permitted on the track. Okay? So once a, once a track is divided into two parcels, according to the covenants, each parcel could only have a residential dwelling on there, not an accessory building. And if you look, there's been violations in the past. One thing I'd like to point out too is that as far as the conditional use permits, they're only sent out for people within five-hundred feet of where that is going to be. That's how come we received this notification of that. So on some of the other buildings that went up out there, there was no notice sent out, at least I never got one, that those buildings were going to be constructed. And so if you don't have any knowledge of those things that are, that are happening, you know, they're just all of a sudden there. If you look into section, the blue section, Track thirty-three, for example, that has been divided into two parcels. The south parcel has the residential dwelling on it, the north parcel has the accessory building. Same thing in the red section, Track number thirty-nine. The south half of that has a house on it, where the north track on that has the accessory building. And those are right along the county road right here. And that is interesting in Track thirty-nine because actually the south track and the north track have different mailing addresses to them. One is a residential, the other was, is an accessory building. The same thing is true in the green section. Tracks fifty-six and fifty-seven have been divided into two parcels. The south parcel has the house, the north parcel has the accessory buildings. Now, my concern to some of this is that because they're set up this way, a landowner can come out there and put up a huge storage building on the second parcel, he could sell his house, he could sell that, that property and maintain his accessory building for storage and not even live in West Acres. So I feel that, number one, some of these need to be redone so that, that when there is the house and the dwelling place, that that be just one parcel, one track, that if one sells, the other one sells. Because I, I just see that as an advantage point. I see in town, there's a lot of people that, that do have the big campers, they have the boats, they have those things. And a lot of times what they're looking for is storage places. And if they, you know, if they would understand that they can come out here, purchase a parcel, put a storage building on it and not even have to live out there, I don't know, that, I think that that really jeopardizes the integrity of our housing development. My husband and I purchased our lot in nineteen-seventy-eight directly from the developer. Their names were John and Julia Cooley. And John's definition for a newly constructed, his definition for that was stick-built. And number four of the restrictions found in the covenants says that no mobile home, trailer, or park should be permitted on any track and all dwellings and other buildings placed on said tracks shall be new construction. So I think with that, you could perhaps consider new construction for residential purposes exclusively would imply that pole buildings were not intended for the development and that all accessory buildings should be stick-built. I also would like to point out that the covenants say that there's not to be any existing buildings brought into the, to the area. And several years ago, though, there was a violation of that that took place on Track I think that, well, I know that also in the covenants, the size of the dwelling is also addressed in the covenants. The second restriction states that no dwelling shall be permitted on any track less than a thousand square feet of floor, floor space exclusive to garages, porches, outdoor buildings, and basements. And back in the nineteen-seventies, if you were to build a residential area, a thousand square feet was probably considered to be a nice-sized home. And I do understand that by today's values or houses that are built, that a thousand square feet is really not that large of a home anymore. But if you take an accessory building and then especially a pole building, that's in excess of the county regulations of twelve-hundred square feet and it's two to three sizes larger than most of the homes in that area, I think that that also violates the integrity of our housing addition. So in closing, there's, I included this little map of the joint jurisdictional boundaries between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls. And West Acres is just within yards of where that boundary line is on Highway forty-two. And I understand some of the problems that the county and the city planners face concerning urban residential developments. But I believe that by upholding the covenant regulations for West Acres, the jurisdictional, jurisdictional control from the county to the city would be less painful for all. And so I'm asking your help by voting no to the issuing of the conditional use permit, fourteen eighteen, and that greater care be given before issuing any such permits in the West Acres residential development. Thank you.
Any questions for Loretta? Commissioner Barth.
Ms. Bandenbrink, did you see the list of conditions that were put on, on this property when, when it, when it went through? Did you see the eight items that, that were put on it?
These...
The eight conditions?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, Madam Chair, I guess I'd ask the state's attorney if, what the status of covenants are for the county.
In my view, covenants are private contractual matter by the landowners that can be enforced in court. That doesn't impair... That doesn't impair the county's action in determining zoning and land use. The owners in an area can impair uses through those private contractual relationships, but that isn't really the role of the county to enforce that as it would in ordinance. If that makes sense.
Any other questions for Mrs. Evanda Brink? Commissioner Benega?
Mrs. Evanda Brink, where do you live in relationship to the applicant's facility?
I live on track. Oh. Sure. Our property is right here. Now you know why I did the cussing. I'm not a dick person. Yes. And we do have a accessory building that sits behind our house. It is a stick-built building. It has got siding on it that matches the house. It's got the exact shingles on it that the house has. Another thing I'd like to point out is that it sits, because it sits behind the house, if you were to drive down Holland Avenue, you really can't see it from Holland Avenue until you just get north of the house. You cannot, you can, there's a point on Snowberry, which is to the north that you can see it. And there's a part on Bruny Avenue to the east that you can see it. But it is, like I said, it is a stick-built structure. It's pretty comparable in size to our house. It's 1,800 square feet, which I believe was the standard set by the county at the time it was built in 1999. Our house without the garage is 1,500 square feet. And so, like I said, most of the homes out in that west area, West Acres Development, there's probably not, I'd say most of the homes out there are within that 1,000 to probably 1,500 or 1,800 square feet in size.
Couple more questions. Are any of the other surrounding neighbors here to oppose this?
I have, Alvin and Liz Folken are here this morning also.
Okay.
And they live on track 70, which is just right behind us. It's, I'm going to try the mouse again, so.
Yeah, I see track 70.
See track 70?
Yep. And I guess the other question, just from my own personal information, is would you rather have his recreational vehicle sitting outside or inside?
You know, I'd like to say, I really have not met, personally met Ryan. I know that one of my neighbors out there, Rob Hartman, has talked with him and said to you that Ryan's really a nice guy, and I don't doubt that. And I would like to take this opportunity to welcome you to our neighborhood. And really would. Last year, we talked about having, you know, a neighborhood cookout and stuff. This spring, so far, we've had, there was a couple that lives right across the street from us that recently lost their infant son. And so there's just been some things going on that kind of prevent us from doing the things that we'd like to do out there. And yes, I would not, I appreciate the fact that he is being considered of the neighborhood and he doesn't want his stuff all over the place. However, for a building that size, I also have a camper. It sits in our backyard, you know, in front of our shed, kind of out of sight. But I also feel that if it's, and ours is outside, it's an older camper, it doesn't bother us to have it outside. My feeling on that is that there are facilities in town that you can rent at a very reasonable price. My son rents a facility in T. So if it's to store larger items such as a camper, that perhaps there's a better alternative. I am concerned about having these large buildings go up in our area. A lot of the concerns come too in the city. At one time, I was working on our residential roads, and I went and visited with, I think it was Jeff Schmidt from the city, and he said, he was telling me that the residential areas, he said eventually they all do get annexed into the city. That's just a fact of life. And so I do have thoughts about, so what is the city going to do with these big sheds when they're out there? And how is that going to affect it? And how can we maintain, you know, the integrity of this? I have great concerns about these one-acre tracks being divided into two parcels, people putting up big buildings like this. And what happens when they move away? What happens with that? When all we are to them is just a storage facility, then, you know, I'm just not looking for that. And I appreciate, I know Ryan has said his plans are to stay in West Acres. He's not planning to do that. I'm sure of that. I'd be willing to bet he wasn't even aware of this coming into it, that because of the way his track is set up, he'd have the opportunity to do that. I bet money on it, he doesn't know that, no, he doesn't know those things. I'd prefer it wasn't public knowledge at this point. But, so no, I do appreciate that he is trying, he is looking out also for the integrity of it. But I think at some point, you kind of have to draw a line in the sand and say, you know, what is going to be best for the development as a whole? And I really thought that, you know, the reason for the covenants was to help maintain some of the integrity that the developer was initially trying to put into that area.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Evanda Brink? Mr. Meyer, you would have an opportunity to come back and, if you have any comments about anything she said.
Other repose?
Yeah, okay. Other, oh, okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition of it first? Identify yourself and where you live.
I'm Alvin Folken, and I live at 26465 Bruny Avenue. I also farm, and I realize that, you know, people need a storage facility for things, but it needs to be a certain size. We're beginning to look more like farmsteads out there, with big pole buildings going up. And I just don't feel the housing development should be a place for that size of building, you know? Yeah, I mean, I'm not against Ryan putting up a small 1,200, 1,300 square foot building as long as it doesn't have 15-foot sidewalls on it. And it's right along Holland Avenue where everybody's going to see it, and it's just going to look like a farmstead then. So I guess that's my only concern is to, why we need to have big pole buildings that look like, you know, farmsteads out there. I've got big machine sheds to put my equipment in, but I think that should be on a farm, not even in a residential area. That's my only concern, I guess. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Folken, what about the other buildings that are already pretty large in that area? You know, there are two that are shown on the map there.
They were put up, they were put up before, I mean, like Loretta says, they were put up, you know, a few years back. We've never notified when they were going up or anything because we wasn't apparently in that 500-foot.
Sure.
Area, so. And that's, I mean, and they're not, you know, that one along 467, that has got probably 14 or 15-foot sidewalls, but the others are probably 10 or 12-foot sidewalls.
Any other questions? Is there anybody else against that wants to speak? Okay, we'll go back to Ryan.
My intention is certainly not to sell the properties off separate. My intention is to use it as a storage facility. One other thing that isn't really, didn't really get said, but, trying to find this pointer here, there is, there's a shed right here at the corner here, there's another one at the corner here. Another one was put up on this lot. There's another one down here. There's another one right here, one on the corner here and one on the corner over here that are all constructed as a pole-type barn. My intention is to make this building fit in the best I can. I'm going to use Wayne's Code, you know, use neutral colors. I don't, not going to make it bright red and pink. It's going to fit in with the rest of the neighborhood. And I mean, there's a bunch of trees back there I'm having to take down. They're going to come down regardless. They're old trees and they're almost dead. So married back a couple more dead. And of course, my intention is to plant new trees. I like nature and I really do want to get this, I want it to fit in. I don't want it to stand out like a sore thumb. And I'm afraid that, you know, if I don't put something up, it'll, it'll look like a mess. And that's certainly not my intention. As far as getting a storage unit outside or somewhere else, I guess that seems a little drastic when I have the space to put up a storage unit or a storage accessory building on my property and use it right there. So, like I said, I have a camper, I have a boat, and actually I have four trailers that, and I intermix these, I use these trailers, maybe not daily, but I do use them quite often depending on the purpose. It depends on which trailer I will use. It's not something I can stick in a storage unit, travel to T to get a, to get my camper or to get my boat or to get a trailer. Also, as my neighbor to the north pointed out there, they have a storage shed as well. And I can see it from my lot and as they would be able to see mine. And they do have their camper parked in front of it. Now, 1,800 square feet, I'm actually going a little bit bigger than that, but I don't think that should be a hindrance on them or, you know, stop the approval of what I'm trying to do.
Any more questions for Mr. Meyer? Commissioner Berth?
How high are your sidewalls going to be?
It's going to be 15-foot. Camper height is about 13.2. And anyway, to get it, I'll have to put a low overhead clearance door in there, but about 15-foot is, I need about a, you know, 13.6, 14-foot door.
Right.
And I can do a 14-foot door and put a low clearance door in to make a 15-foot sidewall work. And that's, that's about the most I can do, or about the least I can do, and that's what I'm trying to keep as low as I can. I don't want to go any higher than I have to.
Sure. Mr. Kelly?
A couple questions. One, there were some pictures, Scott, after these. What's example of a 2,700-foot building, plus or minus?
This one, this one's actually 3,300.
With the garage and the building? Okay.
I have a picture of what I plan on putting up. It'll.
Pretty well answers my question. And then the other question is, are these trailers used for any commercial use?
No, no, just, I use grass. I have two wood burners, so I haul wood with them.
Okay.
I have a little boat tractor, I haul with that. Just a little, just little stuff that I like to use them for.
Any other questions for Mr. Meyer? All right, Commissioner, your decision.
Well, I think, you know, I think his attempt is to clean up the area. There's an awful lot of, when you look at that map, there's a lot of sheds out there, buildings out there. And I would guess, you know, one of the reasons people moved out there is so they can have this stuff and they can store it. I'm going to move for approval with, of the planning commission with the conditions.
I'll second that. I have a question. Do we need to list the conditions or just assume them from that motion?
Boy, they can be referenced from the prior minutes. That's fine.
But for purposes of the audience, perhaps they'd like to hear those.
That's fine, if you want to.
Can we throw them up on the screen, maybe?
I'll just read them.
We have a motion in a second to approve the, uphold the planning commission's decision with the eight conditions that were approved of the planning conditions. And Scott, if you would just read them then?
Sure. There are eight. Number one, that the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed 2,772 square feet. Number two, that the building shall only be used for the petitioner's personal residential use. No commercial or business use or storage shall be allowed. Number three, that the accessory building shall not exceed one story in height. Number four, that a building inspection is required to determine that the building does not exceed 2,772 square feet measured from the outside perimeters. Number five, a building permit is required. Number six, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries. Number seven, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the accessory building at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in compliance with the conditional use permit conditions and the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. And number eight, that prior to applying for a building permit, the applicant shall obtain an approach permit from Wayne Township for any new approach onto Bluegrass Street or Holland Avenue.
Okay. So the motion in a second to approve.
One comment. We're looking at the zoning issues. We're looking at what's, what's able to be built under the county. If you have issues, if the opponents have issues with the covenants, then they should probably approach it from that, but that is not the county issue. The county issue is simply, does this meet our zoning requirements? So if, you know, I understand you're drawing a line in the sand and you're concerned for the overall thing, but that's a covenant issue, that's a civil issue, and the courts are evidently where you have to go. Unfortunately, you have to hire a lawyer, but that's why I vote.
So I have a motion in a second with the eight conditions. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. So conditional use permit has been upheld.
Item number 17 is to consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number 14-04 to allow a bulk fuel storage facility on property legally described at Lot 1, Brower 2nd Edition. Scott Anderson will address this.
Yes, once again, Scott Anderson from the County Planning Department. Today, you have an appeal of a conditional use permit 14-04 to allow a bulk fuel storage facility to be constructed in Lot 1 of Block 2 Brower Subdivision, which is at the Hartford interchange of Hartford and Interstate 29, or sorry, 90. The applicant is Hartford's Farmers Elevator. And in summary, the applicant has requested a conditional use permit at this site to allow some bulk store, some bulk storage of fuel. This was the site plan that was provided by the applicant. And I know this is sort of an architectural rendering or a sketch, but they, the street, I believe, is over here.
North and north.
To the north, up here?
Yep.
Okay. And then they, this is basically like a loading facility or a loading dock, is that correct?
I don't need that. That's.
Right here.
That's.
Yeah. And then you'll be able to go around the building, correct?
Yeah.
Like that. So I, and I do have some pictures. This was approved by the planning commission at their April 28 meeting. I've included the minutes for your review, and I will go over the slides for you. This is the facility partly constructed. The applicant did place the tanks before obtaining a conditional use permit and paid the associated penalty. So they did pay a double fee for their application. This shows the property looking, from the facility looking to the east, and this is the property looking towards the west, towards the county highway and the, basically the on-ramp on Interstate 90, but this is looking directly west. Here's the intersection of the county highway and the, on Jeffrey Street, the only access into this development. And this is from that same spot looking back towards where the applicant's facility would be, and it would be approximately over in here. And once again, this is looking the other direction of the facility. And the reason that the, you see a lot of snow, was this was originally heard before the planning commission in January. They continued it for three months in order to allow the applicant and the neighbors some time to discuss the road. The road into the subdivision has been of concern to many people there, and that's why the pictures are from January. But they are, this is what it looks like basically today. And this is the neighbor's property to the west, or sorry, east. I'll go back to the, to the aerial photograph, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Scott? Any questions for Scott? Mr. Kelly?
Scott, when, don't we have a requirement that, that the road going to the, to our Hartford County Road be paved? I'm thinking back to the thing we have at the Bones Farm down on, down south.
Yeah. And I'll give you a little bit of history. That is correct, Commissioner Kelly. The subdivision requirements today require that when you do a subdivision, any kind of plating, if the access, if the, if the road is coming off a paved road, it's required to be paved. The, the issue that we're running into is that there are two additions, there's a Brower's First Edition and there's a Brower Second Edition. The First Edition is basically this portion, which was up here, this is the First Edition. That was platted and developed prior to our implementation of the subdivision regulations. So they were able to construct the roads, they didn't, there was no minimum standard that they had to meet, and there was not that requirement that the road be paved. This portion was developed, I think, two thousand seven, two thousand six, two thousand seven, in that time period. It is, it was, it's Brower Second Edition, and it was required to be paved because it zoned light industrial. And that was one of the requirements for the, the, it is one of the requirements that property that's zoned industrial and once it's platted, then it needed to be, those roads needed to be paved. So, so we have sort of a split subdivision, half of it's paved, half of it's not. The, the problem is that the, the only access road, or not the problem, excuse me, the issue, is that the only access road into the subdivision that everyone has to go through is right in here to get to their properties is not paved, it's gravelled, so.
Commissioner Kelly?
We have an issue though because, because of the, what happens when they go onto the county highway, I would guess, is that-
Well, the issue is, as I see it, as I indicated, everyone, everyone in this subdivision, with the exception of this property and this property, but everyone in this subdivision has to go over this portion of the road. And I have been here going on ten years, and it is a perennial problem that in the spring, the, the frost comes out of that road and it's very soft. I was out there three weeks ago, and once again, it was, you could tell it was, there are many, many soft spots. And what happens is, people start sort of avoiding the soft spots, they just sort of move over, they go around them, and it just, it, it doesn't really benefit that road any and the soft spots, they, they firm back up in the, in the summer, you know, they, they, people driving over them, they, they compact back. But it's, it's a constant problem. Now, this year, we had sort of a dry spring, but I have been out there before where there are ruts that are two feet deep in those soft spots. And, and that occurs typically when we have a, a very wet spring immediately following the, the frost coming up out of the ground.
Commissioner Bill?
One more follow-up. In order, the, the folks in Brower One could form a road district, is that correct?
It's my understanding that there is a, there is a road district-
In Brower One?
Brower One and Two.
Yep.
They're separate though.
Then what's to prevent Brower One from, I mean, if the majority of the, of the property owners want to pave that, can they do that?
They, they, they certainly could pave that if that was their desire. They would have to levy the appropriate amount of, of taxes to, to, to do the work, or I suppose they could utilize any bonding that is available through, a road district is an entity of, of government. They could do whatever methods are legally available to them to raise money.
This road district has been in place since two thousand seven, so there's been plenty of time to get this thing going and have enough money to pay for that road to be fixed.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Berth.
I think that they had a road association in Brower One, which is different than a road district, and then a road district in, in number two. And I guess additionally, talking about going around the soft spots on the road, they drive across people's yards and stuff.
In two thousand seven, they came to the county commission and got a road district.
For Brower One?
For Brower One. They checked that out yesterday. Are there any other questions for Scott? Commissioner-
Well, I have a legal question. If it's a road district, what authority do we have?
Oh, we don't have any authority. They're a separate governmental entity that levies taxes, for a better way of put it, to maintain the, the roads. Once it's formed, they have to follow certain rules and regulations in the statute about how they go about their business, but they're ultimately responsible for that road and the county or the township is not. What you're considering today is a land use. However, it is inside this area where the only access to the property is through a road district road.
So is that a legitimate question of us, is, is, if it meets all qualifications except, except the problem getting to it, is that one of the criteria we can use to determine?
Well, let me ask staff, was that considered in your report to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
My, my recommendation was to deny the request because I felt that the road, the road was in such a shape that it, it may be further impaired by heavy truck traffic. This is a bulk fuel storage facility, so you can assume that it's, it's going to be a heavy truck, not like a passenger vehicle or a service vehicle, but it's gonna be a heavier weight vehicle driving up and down that road. You can ask the applicant approximately how many trips a day they would anticipate, but my evaluation was the, and my past experience from the many years I've taken several calls, many calls, always in the spring, that, that people are unhappy with the road, the condition of the road. And so I really, I recommended denial because I felt that the road, that the additional development that's occurring on that road needed to be addressed and, and we all, I think that there needs to be a solution to that road, the, the condition of the road.
I have a question for Kirsten.
Sure.
We can't force them to fix that road, so by them not fixing the road, they are shutting down their development. If we say we're not gonna prove anybody else to go in there, they basically shut that development down because the road's not fixed.
We cannot force them to do anything with the road district. However, aggrieved landowners within that road district can bring a court action, basically, to either dissolve it, make them do their duties, for a better way of putting it. They, they do have those options, but those lie with the landowners and, and the interested parties within that area, not with the county. And I, if I may?
Yep.
I believe there is some litigation still ongoing over this road district formation and the duties that are out there, is that correct?
It's my understanding as, as well.
Yeah.
Mr. Berth?
I just would make the comment that, on the one hand, it's planning, and the other hand, it's zoning. And, you know, planning means having a, a road. Zoning means using the property for what you want to use it for. And I can remember many instances where we've had to consider roads, for example, haul roads from gravel pits that we've had them pave them because of the concern about dust, et cetera. So roads are commonly an issue that we, we contend with on, on planning and zoning issues. And the zoning is great, the planning is bad at this point for this subdivision. I think if they were to fix these roads, their value, the value of their property would be enhanced immensely.
Ken has a comment.
Yeah.
Question?
Oh.
I'm gonna ask that, you know, at this stage of your deliberation, that in fairness, you should hear from the applicant-
Yeah, we will.
And what their proposal is, and then any detractors, and then this kind of discussion that you're having now should probably take place after that.
Okay. Listen to the proponent, the person in favor.
Monty Schrader, General Manager of Hartford Farmers Elevator. Yes, there's ongoing litigation, and from my understanding on the road district out there, there was some work done. Bills were handed out, they were not paid, paved, paid for, and that's why no other work has been done because if nobody's gonna pay for it, they're not gonna do it. As far as what I want, we have, I have two hundred and fifteen members of the co-op, of which a hundred and ninety-three of them are fuel customers of ours. They want that. For the last ten years, we've paid out one point six million dollars to our patrons and patronage and retired equity, so we're helping the community. Our patrons want this, we want this. We think it's good for us, it's good for Hartford. We just think this would be the best spot for it. We could put it in town, we don't want it in town. They're building, they have constructed the exact same thing right behind the Coffee Cup in Hartford, within six hundred feet of an apartment building. We just thought this would be better for us as stewards of Hartford not to put it inside the city of Hartford, so we picked Brower Edition, not knowing what was all going on out in Brower Edition. It's a light industrial, we thought this was the perfect spot for it. Obviously, we've had some conflict with this because of the road. I do know the road is in dire shape. If you figure on what we were planning on selling for fuel, there would be, on average, one semi every four days on that, coming in, and then our fuel truck, our little fuel truck going, going out. We have a little single axle fuel truck that hauls two thousand gallons. So that going out, you know, depending on the day, maybe two, three times a day at most, so. Any questions?
Any questions? Which road district are you on?
We would, I'm not on any road district, but we would be in the Second Edition.
You're in the Second Edition, okay.
I have talked to people on the road district out there. I'd be more than willing to sit on a road district if somebody asked me, but nobody's asked. I, I mean, if, there's gotta be a common resolution for this, and, I mean, I live in Hartford Heights, which is a subdivision, just like West Acres. Hartford Township maintains it. Hartford Township does not have a lot of money. I had a graduation this weekend. I went out and drug my own road for way more than I own, just to fill in the washboards on my own because I wanted people coming to my son's graduation to not hit all the washboards. I know Hartford Township can't come out and blade it just for me, but I mean, and some people out there, I look, I drive up and down that once a week, twice a week, they have culverts. Yep, they're crushed in, they push, no, skid loaders hit them, whatever, they're crushed closed. Well, isn't that the property owners to go back and open that culvert up and take care of their property? That's what I have to do on my property where I live, and I would do the same there, but I think, I mean, some of this stuff can be taken care of by property owners themselves, not coming in front of you commissioners to make a decision for it. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions from Monty?
Just a comment. I don't think anything that we've been talking about is directed at your business. I mean, obviously, it's affecting it, but, but it's not, it's not what you're building or how it looks or anything else. It's, it's, I guess, all about the developer and his refusal to, to work on, or at least apparent refusal to work on the other issue, so. Just, just, it's not against you guys.
No, and I know there's two ongoing lawsuits as far as with the road district and I think with people, with landowners and the property, and I think with the road district and the township, I believe. I don't know for sure, but that's what I have been informed of anyway, so.
Any other questions for Monty?
Let me ask Monty one more question.
Okay.
Monty, your customers are going to be farmers and the West Central School District, stuff like that, right?
Right.
And so, you need to get going in order for them to do their work, right?
Right. And another thing that has come to my considerate, or my knowledge, since the Coffee Cup has taken over what used to be Tam and Oil, there is no longer a pump for die diesel fuel for farmers. So, I mean, that puts an extra burden on us for that reason because construction companies can no longer go to and get their fuel from a pump at a gas station.
Right.
So, we are now required to take on that load also.
Thank you.
Any, now it's time for the opponents to speak, who's against this development? If you'd identify yourself and your address, please.
Bob Shilpe. I own the property where the storage units are right in here.
Good.
We bought that property in nineteen ninety-six. At that time, we were not required to be a member of the road district. Our purchase agreement states that the county has authority to tax that guy. Assessment levied against the property or will be levied against the property for improvements completed but not yet entered on the books of the local assessing authority will be paid by the seller. That is who has to pay for this road. He states in here that he will pay for, and the county has authority to assess that guy for the road. The road is in almost impassable condition. If we get a two or three inch rain, part of that road's gonna be flooded, and it's gonna be extremely soft. As of this spring, that road is widened out five feet on each side. So, like you said, vehicles are driving on our property to get away from those ruts. Granted, there, some of the drainage was taken out when they did this work last time. Some of the drainage wasn't ever put in correctly. So water sets in those ditches after a rain for many months. That's why the road is so soft. That is the developer's responsibility from the very beginning. I call that road part of the infrastructure. The infrastructure cannot handle any more development out in that area, just like if somebody wanted to go out and start a new development, you would require them to have a road suitable for the use there. This road is not suitable for eighty or ninety thousand pound trucks to go down, or however many pounds a single axle truck can haul out. This is gonna be very devastating to that road and to the current customers there. Like Commissioner Kelly was saying, it's not against the project itself, it's against the infrastructure of that development that is not suitable to handle that kind of traffic. And like I said, if we get a heavy rain, part of that road's gonna be flooded, part of the road, the ditches are gonna be full, and it's gonna continue to deteriorate. Like I said, we were not required or notified that there was a road district when we purchased the property. The statement right here says that the seller will be responsible for that. And we, or I wish the county would assess this, assess the seller of this property to develop the road, which according to this here contract, you have the authority to do that. So I think it's part of the county or the township's responsibility to get this road done. It also states in here that the seller will maintain snow removal on the property until it is turned over to the township, and he doesn't do that either. So, the seller is not being responsible for his part of this contract, even though it was made in nineteen ninety-six. Some people did not pay for the assessment of the road district. Some people say the road district was not legal, wasn't set up right, wasn't a recognized entity. We paid our share of the road development, which has just moneyed down the drain because it wasn't engineered or planned out to improve the road. It was just to pacify some of the people. So the road district, I don't know where it's at right now, if it's still in existence or it's dissolved, Road Association, I don't know. But the seller failed to start that when he started the development area. I've been a member of other road districts that the seller, the developer, is responsible for everyone that buys a lot there to pay. Every, when they buy the lot, every six months you have to pay so much money, and the roads are developed there. This was a very haphazard, very shoddy development to begin with, and he states in here that he will- And he states in here that he will, is allowed to be assessed for this work. He has plenty of other property back there for the county to assess against to get him to pay. I have no idea what it's gonna cost to develop this road, but it's the county's responsibility to get it done and to assess this property.
Kirsten?
We have no taxing authority that isn't given by statute. Somebody can't give through contract a taxing authority to the county that they don't have. Now, whether he agreed to that in the contract is one thing. You do have a method of doing that sort of thing through the road district chapter, through the Board of Trustees of the road district, asking them to assess under their governmental powers. We don't have governmental powers that others give us by a private contract between land sellers. That's my legal opinion, anyway.
Questions for Mr. Schulte? Schulte?
Schulte, yes.
Schulte, excuse me. Ken, did you wanna speak to the road district just a little bit?
No.
No, I think you've done it. No, well, I had a lot of questions for you yesterday, so I'm just wondering if you would just kinda reiterate.
No, I'm not speaking to that directly. And there has been a lot of questions concerning that issue, you know, and my understanding, you know, I'll just speak briefly on it. My understanding is that, yes, the road district was formed, and that, and yes, and that it can be an active district. However, since the formation of that district, absolutely nothing has been done relative to determining costs of doing that, submitting the required documentation in order to do the proper assessments, you know, for a road district that would appear on tax bills and everything else, and money's distributed. None of that's been done. So, it's just sitting there. And then, whether or not it needs new officers or something else to kickstart it is another issue, but I'm sure that's all clouded and tidied up with the current lawsuits that are going on. And then, those will probably have to be resolved and some direction given before those can go on. The only reason that I stood up, if you're asking, for opponents, there was a gentleman that stopped by the office today, and he absolutely wanted to be here, but the time didn't permit it, and he just wanted me to voice his name and his, and again, his name is Larry Coulterman. He's a contractor that has the Heartland Building out there, he said. He's a property owner, and he just simply said, "I think we need to have the road issues taken care of before any additional development goes on out there." And he asked me specifically to relay his concerns and comments on that issue to you.
Commissioner.
Ken, don't go away. It's not getting off that easy. Some clarification on the road district. Everybody within the road district is technically a member, is that not right?
Well...
I mean, I, I understand there's, there's a board that governs the road district, but everybody is a part of electing that board?
Now, you know, I'm not prepared to answer that. I'm just not, because one of the issues, because one of the issues is, and I don't know all of that yet, and I haven't delved that deeply in what the auditor's offices, when the district was originally formed, you know, did this second addition exist at that time? I don't know that, and I don't know if they were incorporated at the time of development. Alls I know is that, yes, a district was created at a certain time, and nothing has happened since that time.
Then, I would ask Kirsten, what recourse do the people within the district, not, not District Two, but the number one, what recourse do they have to getting something done?
Well, without going into specific legal advice, 'cause I'm not their attorney, and this really is a matter for them to litigate if they're not doing their duties under the road district. But generally, there are a few solutions. Board of Trustees should be elected in accordance with its Chapter 31-12A. The Board of Trustees should be properly elected, they should have proper meetings according to the regulations under that chapter. Their first remedy is to get different Board of Trustees members that maybe will take action. The second is there's specific duties under this chapter as to maintenance of the roads under that jurisdiction in this, in a defined area, and a certain number of those people can ask that those duties be performed, but that is not something that the county or the county commission or the township, for that matter, in my opinion, has any role in doing, once that road district is properly formed.
And they are subject to open meeting law then?
Absolutely. They're another unit of government. Generally, it's, I think, a lot of the regulations that they have reflect municipal, treating it as a municipality, but for limited purposes.
One other question, Chairman. Is the developer here?
Mr. Brower is not here.
And I don't know if there's any more people who...
Is there any, is there anyone else opposed that wants to speak? Just try not to repeat what's already been said. Anything new?
I just, my name is...
Your name and address.
My name is Karen Leesinger, and we own the property adjacent to the subject property to the west, 46323 through 46327 Jeffrey Street. And I guess you've heard all of that stuff before. We're under the impression that the road district was, is not a legal entity, which you have just discussed. Also, the other thing is the zoning of the, of the Brower One. When it was zoned industrial, I guess we thought that that would mean, and we also have the purchase agreement that says the seller was responsible for all maintenance, snow removal, but if it was zoned industrial, it should be able to handle industrial, but it doesn't. And so, that's, my question about the zoning is, when was it zoned industrial, and who zones it industrial, and was there anything at that point that was stated that should have been done?
Questions for Mrs. Leesinger. Scott, is Scott in here? I don't even see Scott. There he is. Do you know when it was zoned?
Not right off the top of my head. I, I'm, we had this discussion at the Planning Commission back in January, and the owner of this property spoke at the meeting, and I think he indicated, let me look quick in my minutes. I didn't there. I think he said 78, but, real quick, if I can see that. No, it just says he was one of the original buildings in the area. It's in the minutes, it didn't give a, it didn't give a date. I just remember him saying he was one of the original, it's Mike Vulcan, I think, who owns this building right here, said that he was one of the original. I mean, I could find that out, but, you know, as I indicated, our subdivision regulations weren't adopted till, like, 1987, and this greatly precedes that. So, it was zoned, it was zoned correctly, and it, it just was, the zoning preceded our subdivision regulations, which was one of the issues. And I think that everyone's recapped the, you know, the greater issues that we're facing here, and that is what to do about the road district. And I think it was also said that, you know, we don't have any authority to move them along. They are a legal unit of government. So, it's been, it's been difficult for me, you know, dealing with the land use, and then also on the same, on the other flip side of that is that the land use is appropriate, as we've all discussed. It is zoned light industrial, but we have an issue with the infrastructure, and I, and we don't have any, you know, there's nothing for us to force them into this, other than denying condition use permits, the other option. And I, we implemented this when I was in Pennington County. You could, at a later date, to help push this all to the, get it moving, would be to, like, implement a building permit moratorium, where you just say, nothing more is gonna be built out there. Because some of what's happening is, you know, the, the people, if you have all of your own, your buildings and your activities, it's all good. It's just anything that's new is gonna be hindered. But eventually, if you're, if you're putting a building permit moratorium on there, that is maybe another tool to make everyone come to the table, because it indicates to sellers and people that are interested in the property that, you know, you can't do anything there until we get this resolved. But, there's a number of options that, I'm glad to answer any other questions you have.
Any questions for Scott?
Madam Chairman?
Yep.
Being as there's another resource present in the room, I wonder if we could ask Nick Fosheim to speak.
Nick, do you have any comments about road district? Nick is with Economic Development.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Fosheim, Manyaha County Economic Development Association. I think the one comment that I would make, and I agree with Ken, that we have a lot of questions that we still have to have answered. As I've been making, I've talked to several of the county staff yesterday, and I think as we look into this a little bit more, there are two things that, that don't make sense. And I think, I, I've heard it this morning, too. You've heard Road Association, and you, and you've heard Road District. And so, I don't, I don't know if there are two entities out there that exist, and so that's what we have to research a little bit further. And my, my thought is that many people don't know that the district actually exists, so those would be my comments today.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
So, Nick, you know, Sioux Falls, for example, is getting $40 million to gain nine acres of land downtown here. The governor spent $5 million to recruit out-of-state workers to come here. Can't we find money in one of our economic development funds to try to fix this up? Perhaps we could offer a TIF, for example, Tax Increment Financing, to make the improvements and have it paid off at a, at a steady but long-term pace? I mean, this, this area could be really a jewel if, if it was fixed up properly. And, you know, why, how can we pull together both the warring neighbors here and our economic development stuff and our zoning and planning and commission and make this thing work?
So, we agree, and I know that Scott's had meetings in the past with the landowners out there, and I think that one thing that, an opportunity we see is to pull everybody together. But before we do that, we want to make sure that that meeting is focused on solutions to the problem, and that's what we're coming up with right now, is that list of solutions.
Right. Recriminations wouldn't be helpful at that point. Thank you.
Did you have a question, Kelly? I will, need to give the proponent one more opportunity to speak.
Gerald had his hand up.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to point out that this property directly to the north, planning and zoning granted a permit last night to put, to build on that one.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We did approve a mini storage facility there yesterday.
There's another...
Commissioner Kelly?
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to defer this like 90 days.
We're, we're not quite done yet. He has another proponent.
Pardon me?
There's a proponent wants to speak first.
All right.
Hi. I'm Mike Johnson, I live right next door, and I've been here, lived there since 1969. So, I've heard a lot about the road, and I think the elevator would be a good one to do some mediation, because we have two sides here that I don't know if they can agree that the sun is coming up, which, which direction the sun comes up in the morning. 'Cause it's just arguing, arguing. But I think the elevator with our patrons and what we're gonna do for the community is gonna be a good one to get this road district and all this stuff started. Because the way it is now, you can see it, nothing's gonna happen. But you have to get some new blood in there to get something started.
Commissioner Benega?
Well, way back to my first question when we got this ball rolling. What responsibility does a road district have, and does the county have the ability to direct the entrance from the highway to that first distance before the road district begins, as I understand it? And the second part of my question is, is we're never gonna get the road district issue solved, because if it's in court now, how long has it been in court? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea. We haven't been made a party to this, which is why I'm not sure where this is.
I understand. Two years? It's been there for two years and it hasn't been addressed, or it's continuing?
From what I know, both parties have pleaded in front of a judge, and they're waiting for the judge to make their decision. That's all I know.
They're running for reelection.
Is that Mr., I'm not even gonna respond to that one. Mr. Schulte, do you know if that's your understanding of the legal issue at this point about the road district? Do you have any idea, Mrs. Leesinger, I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name, if that's the status of the legal issues?
The status...
You have to come up here, 'cause Dick can't hear.
I'm trying to get to the bottom of one issue, and then I, then I have a suggestion.
From what I understand, it's still in litigation. It was in front of a judge, and it was changed then to include the township. So, it's multiple parties, and so that's, I think, what's taking so long.
I just made it more complicated. Yeah.
And I think it's been going on for probably three...
Three years. Well, I don't think that we have the ability to solve a legal issue that's currently pending in court, 'cause I, that, I didn't know about yesterday when I talked to some of the landowners around. But, the other thing that I'm concerned about is the fact that we obviously have an applicant who has indicated to other owners that they were going to take care of something that hasn't been taken care of. So, the approach that's from the highway into the, I'll call it the road district at this point, how far into the road district do we have responsibility to make a decision based on that particular piece of the road?
In my opinion, a road district entrance like that would be treated as a private driveway is treated, and whatever regulations apply to that. That's my understanding. Actually, highway would probably even deal with that more often if they're here, but that's my understanding, is these are treated as, as private entrances, just like anybody's driveway would be going out onto a county or township or state highway. And if you're, and if I ask for you to talk, I'm sorry. Sorry if you weren't prepared.
To the right of...
To the right of way? Okay.
We would treat a private roadway as a driveway entrance, and we would maintain up to the right-of-way line.
Okay. Thank you.
Question, what, what authority do you have on driveways?
We, we are required to build an initial driveway approach, and then, as far as maintenance, we have the private landowner maintain that right-of-way, maintain the approach. And then, if there's a problem with the culvert, depending on the problem with the culvert, we would replace the culvert. I know the one that you guys aren't, the Jeffrey Street, it does not have a culvert, so that would not be in question. But as far as the actual approach, if we were to have Jeffrey, or if Jeffrey Street was to be paved, then if we went by on 151 with a paving project, we would pave up to the right-of-way line and maintain that pavement. Since it's gravel, we go through on 151 with our paving, and we come out about two feet, which is what our typical paver extension is on that type of project. And so, as far as maintenance goes, since this is gravel, we have a two-feet pavement, pavement section that we extend out beyond the pavement limits if they were to pave it.
And a culvert would normally be the responsibility of the developer, the property...
The landowner, right. And then, depending on the problems that occur over the life of that culvert, if that needed to be replaced, sometimes it's the, the landowner's responsibility to replace that, sometimes it is the highway department's responsibility to replace it.
Commissioner Benega?
Well, that two feet's not gonna help much. The issue is, I, I don't wanna be a legal advisor, but I would suggest that we have way too many legal issues that have not been resolved in reference to the road district, and if the seller's responsible for contracts that were signed prior to the road district, and if the road district changed those agreements in any way. But those are legal issues that we're not gonna resolve here. I hate to say this, but I do not see us being able to solve this problem without also ending in court, representing our own interest, if you will. So, I don't believe that we can come to a conclusion... I would make that motion to defer this for 90 days with a comment if we get a second.
I'll second that.
My comment is, I think, yeah, there are way too many issues out here for us to make a legitimate decision today. Two is, I'm going to request that we introduce a building moratorium at a meeting to force some resolution to this issue.
I have a motion and a second to defer for 90 days. Commissioner Barth?
Well, as you know, I voted against this project because of the road back in, when we, it was approved on a three-to-one vote. I was the one member of the Planning Commission that voted against it. But I, I feel this is an important project. I, I'm regretful that we would further delay this facility from coming into existence because of the benefit to the A community and to the school district in that area. And, you know, just to defer things endlessly, I, I would hope that perhaps we could make progress with our, our friends in the Minnehaha County Economic Development and the state's economic development people, and with ourselves chipping in where we can. I just hate to delay it any further. And, yes, we did approve a, a storage facility in that, it's a second edition, last night at our meeting. The plan, the zoning is okay, the planning is bad, and that's where we're at in it. I'm really kind of still uncertain how I'll vote.
Commissioner Benega.
Well, I'm just going to reiterate the fact that I think we're being asked to make a decision, which I wish we could make, but I don't think we have the legal authority to make a decision based on the road district terminology that we do not frankly understand or that's being challenged right now in court. So I believe that until a court decision's made, we can mediate whatever both sides would like us to mediate, but I'm not sure that we're going to make any progress, since this has already been in the works for umpteen years, and I don't think we have the legal authority to do that.
Commissioner Kelly.
I disagree with Commissioner Barth on the, I don't think we need to go out and find a funding mechanism for them. I think this is the developers' issue, and perhaps Nick gets involved from a standpoint of just wanting to make a development situation. Yes, this is a good part, but no, if the developer's not going to do anything, we're never going to agree to, to do anything. We wouldn't do it with a developer that just came in and said, listen, I'll do what I can when I can. That's not the way it runs. So I, I don't agree that it's our responsibility or even to, to go out and help them resolve this issue, them not being the property owners, but them being the developer.
I think it's very unfortunate that we approved something, or not we, but the building committee approved something last night when we have this one here that we're deferring for 90 days, and they don't want any more traffic out there, and it's a mess. And this is not fair to the people who want to put up a oil storage, just because they have a bigger truck than somebody who has a mini storage unit. It's just, it's not right. That being said, we have a motion and a second on the table to defer for 90 days. Are there any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously to defer for 90 days.
If anything can be done, can I mention that...
You have to come up to the microphone.
I want to mention that they had meetings with some owners out there, or maybe I misunderstood.
What was that?
I thought somebody said a few minutes ago that they had meetings with some of the owners out there.
What, oh, I think you just mentioned you talked to some people, but I think talk to Nick Fosheim, who works on the economic development, and see if they can help you with getting your road district together.
Would the county commissioners be willing to be on that board or be on some advising or pushing behind it?
I don't think we have any legal authority whatsoever to even be on it.
And I would caution against you doing that if you're the appellate body that is considering the appeal of a conditional use permit at this point. I think that arguably would be beyond your role at this point. Not because you don't want to be helpful, but because you're, you're basically sitting as a reviewing body on a live issue in front of you.
Let me ask again. Could the county start, I guess you probably don't want to start anything else, get anything going to get a trustee going?
That guy right back there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. All right. Eighteen.
Okay, item number eighteen, Minnehaha County Commission Liaison Reports. All commissioners.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
I was up at the East Dakota Water District, and I think there was some comment today in the paper about water testing, and they are getting a grant from, the city of Sioux Falls is getting a grant from East Dakota to put in a, a device that tests the nitrate level in the river on a continuous basis, it takes a measurement every fifteen minutes. And so they'll see how rain affects it, how, you know, high levels, low levels, whatever affect it. Then on the, on the library board, I just would say that there was apparently a fabulous event at the Oakville Library with, where they invited, or the Cleveland Elementary School brought over a whole bunch of kids, and everybody got kind of fun activities, and everyone, everyone left with a library card. And it, you know, we talk about the issue of our culture, our crime and stuff like this, you know, getting our kids involved in things like the library, that's exactly the kind of stuff we need to have. And I'm so proud of the library and the school to start working together at that, and I think that's my report.
Any other reports? I'd also say they opened the new library up in Colton. They had a grand opening of the new county library, so, yeah. Commissioner, Ken.
I thought, as long as you're talking about the Siouxland Library, that I take this opportunity, the, we've been contacted by the Siouxland Library Network that the county representative on the library board, looks like they moved into city limits. And so we will have to be looking at a new appointment for the rural representative on the library board. And that, and we have put out, we were asked to put out a press release today, seeking applications, and that'll be on our website, as well as the application form. So we will be actively seeking a, a new appointment for us on the library board.
Madam Chair, and that member was, the board was going to allow her to stay on, but she wanted to leave since she was no longer living in the rural area.
Okay. Is there any new business? Got one.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wadambak, Minnehaha County Information Technology Director. You may recall, a couple of months back, I asked if I could apply for a grant for a South Dakota broadband initiative. And I did apply for that grant, and I was informed on Friday that we were approved of that grant. So as part of that process, excuse me, we, we are asked to sign a grant award agreement. So I apologize, we didn't get this on the agenda, but it does need to be turned in this coming Friday. And the agreement basically says that when we receive this equipment, we have to put it in within a period of 90 days, which I have no concerns with, and we have to take pictures of it, just basically be responsible with the grant, and I have no concerns with that. So with that being said, I'm asking you to sign the grant award agreement in the amount of about $8,600 worth of wireless equipment to refresh our existing wireless infrastructure.
Commissioner Benega.
I will need to abstain from that, since our organization has been a longtime requestor, if that's a word, of those grants, and we've received one grant in the past and actually competed with Monty on this go-round, so I'm happy you won, but not happy I lost.
I make a motion to authorize Chairman to sign the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign the grant award agreement for $8,600.
Give or take.
Okay. So leave the money amount out. So sign the agreement. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to zero.
One abstention.
With one abstention.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Is there any old business? Seeing no old business, we need to adjourn into executive session for personnel matter and reconvene...
Yes, this should be very, very brief.
And reconvene about five minutes after executive session?
Yes, I just want to remind for people there, we had it scheduled for 10:30. We guessed wrong, and that, but yeah, you're going to do some preliminary budget overview and some preliminary information as you prepare for budget hearings.
Okay. So I need a motion for executive session.
I made that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn into executive session for personnel. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Downtown Sioux Falls should be going forward.